For the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, to the Board of Supervisors meeting for January, or February, 18th. Today, we had an executive session before our meeting today discussing legal matters and matters of policy. I would also like to introduce, we have a special presentation today. Ms. Doreen Stratton has graced us with her presence to honor Black History Month. Doreen, would you like to come up and speak? Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for inviting me. I was trying to decide what to say in about five or 10 minutes, but I think, first of all, thank you for acknowledging the fact that there are Black people here in Bucks County, in the township and the borough. And many of us, our histories go back quite a few generations. My grandfather came here in 1887, and my sister Judith and I, who was back there, we are living in the home where he settled with his wife Lily and where they raised eight children. So, we are really deep in the roots, Doylestown area. All of us went, attended the school, the Borough School. If any of you here remember the Borough School, it was wonderful. This month is very special for people of color. And for, speaking for ourselves, we always just assumed that our, the extension of our history reached only back to Philadelphia, where my father, his, our generations began with Tobias Stratton, a free Black in 1767. And it was only about 10 years ago that we realized that our generations reached back to the time when our nation was just becoming a country. And for other people, I know some people believe, well, why, why do you think it's so necessary to celebrate this? We, people who are alive now, have no connection to what happened 600, 400 years ago, but it is important. Everyone has a history. And one of the things that I always say when I give my presentations is I tell people that you have a history and you really should always try to share it with your children, grandchildren, your friends, young people, because when you go, when I go, there's a lot of my history that's going to go with me. And it's very important. So, no matter what your color is, no matter what religion, everybody has a history and it's important, because unless you reach back to find out where you came from, you're not going to know where you're going. And I don't think I have anything else to say, because usually I'm quite talkative. I'll keep it to five minutes. Thank you.
So, Doreen, you do presentations for other organizations, longer presentations, more in-depth presentations. Is there anything coming up, especially during this month?
Well, tomorrow, tomorrow night, I will be doing a presentation at our Episcopal Church in Doylestown, and it is Blacks in the Civil War. Our grandfather served in the Union Navy, and we have, we have been putting, Judith is the one who first put this together, and I kind of took it over from her. But it is his history. He served, he served on a vessel that was a blockade, that did the blockade so that the Confederates could not have the Brits bring in the stuff to keep the war going. And then the other one, there's, and then I'm doing the same one at the end of the month down in North Hampton. But they're the only ones coming up at this point. Another one, which is off of Black history, is Neshamani Manor asked me to give a presentation on women who served in Vietnam during the war. I had done a great deal of research for it, hoping to put together enough to put a book out there, but ran into a lot of glitches. I never served. And a lot of, a lot of the people that served at that time, especially women, they're very, they, they keep their stories close to them. But I was able to do three, and one of the women who perished in Vietnam was Second Lieutenant Carol Drausba, and I will be speaking about her life and why she went in the service, where she served, and, and of course, how she perished. So, she's very special, because she's from Dunmore, Pennsylvania, one of our own. And I guess that's it for now.
Thank you so much, Doreen. Thank you, Judith, for coming out. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Doreen. All right, so next on the agenda is public comments on agenda items only. Does anybody have any public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we have some announcements for tonight. Our next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held on March 18th at 7:00 PM, right here. The Doylestown Township Park and Recreation Board and Department invite you to join the fun on March 2nd for the Inside Open, an exciting indoor golf tournament at Main Swing Sports and Social in the Borough. The spots are limited, so register now. I think registration closes soon, I think, a couple days, on the 22nd, I believe. So, please register now and secure your time. And are we looking for sponsors still?
Yes.
We're still looking for sponsors, so if anybody wants to sponsor that, we're open for sponsorships as well. The proceeds will benefit the Community Rec Center and Park Improvements. You can also keep up to date with our township news and events using our e-newsletter. It's fantastic. It comes out once a week on Fridays, and it gives you a real snapshot of what's going on in the township and what's to come. So, next on the agenda is the minutes approval for our last meeting. Does, has everybody had an opportunity to read them?
Move for the approval of the minutes from January 21st.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, correspondence, the Lenape Valley Foundation waiver of permit fees. Stephanie, would you like to?
Certainly. You have a letter in your packet that we received from Dave Harold, who's the Chief Executive Officer for the Lenape Valley Foundation. And they have shared with the board their permit fees that are totaling just a little over $123,000. I know they're looking for a waiver of some sort in a reduction in those fees. And I've also attached the resolution that we've had on the books for quite a while, 1533, that the board may waive, I believe, up to $1,000, that is what it says, for nonprofit organizations in the township.
Stephanie, I believe that's $1,000 per permit.
Right, per permit.
So, if they have four permits submitted, that's $1,000 for each permit? Or does it all count as one permit?
Technically, it's, it is the four, but you could, I mean, you could do it as the four, because it does break down as a, they didn't put it that way. I think they're looking at it as one big permit at the end of the day, but that's one way of looking at it, Dan, is the building permit, the mechanical, the electrical, and the plumbing. And the state fees and things like that, you typically do not waive, so.
Does anybody have thoughts on this?
I think we have to go with the resolutions. That's already been written.
Yeah, it's $1,000 per permit.
Are we thinking $1,000 or one per permit?
I read it as one, I read it as one permit. I mean, you can interpret you want. I'll go with whatever the board decides, but it looks like it's one permit, the way it's presented, and whatever we do for them, we have to do for everyone, so.
Well.
Because we're interpreting the resolution.
I'm fine with $1,000.
Any other opinions, thoughts?
I'm fine with $1,000, too.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Don't move.
All right, second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let them know.
Okay, next on the list is a solicitor report.
Thank you. We have forwarded a memo to the board regarding Act 94 of 2024, which is the annual maximum compensation raise for Second Class Township Board of Supervisors. This was passed at the end of last year. It was raising the compensation for supervisors in townships of the Second Class. It is the first time it has been adjusted since 1995. The compensation, which is proposing, proposing to be raised, is based on population. The township would need to pass an ordinance setting this new compensation. If the township did not pass an ordinance, the old compensation would remain in effect. And if this board were to pass such an ordinance, the five of you would continue to be compensated at the old rate for the remainder of your term. And it would only go into effect for any new supervisors or any current supervisors who are beginning a, a new term. So, if the board does want to consider this, we can put an ordinance together. If not, then your compensation will just remain where it had been since 1995.
Can we clarify what the compensation for the board currently is and what it would be increased to?
If someone will tell me.
$1,125,000. And it'll go to?
$6,000.
$6,915.
Okay.
That's based on a population of 15,000 to 24,999 individuals.
Yeah, just, just to be clear, that's 4,000 plus a year for the supervisors, and it is proposed to go up to 6,000 a year for supervisors. So, just wanted to make sure that that was, that was clear.
Supervisors currently have the option to do that or get benefits through the township.
Health insurance, correct.
Health insurance. I would make the motion to, to do the ordinance, because oftentimes, people who end up deciding to serve maybe have retired, and I think that's a nice bonus for them if they decide to participate. Oftentimes, they use that payment to, for different events or to pay for outside expenses that, that, you know, they're asked to attend, and, you know, that could be like fundraisers, those types of things.
I'm comfortable with tabling this until, with some further thought on it.
If she made the motion, I'm happy to second it.
Well, there's not really a motion, because this isn't listed as an action item this evening. All you would be doing would be, a majority of the board would need to give us direction to draft the ordinance. If we were to draft the ordinance, if the majority of the board wanted us to, does not mean you actually have to approve it when it, when it comes to a vote, doesn't even mean you actually have to vote to authorize the advertisement. All you would be doing at this time would be directing us to draft the ordinance.
I'm not inclined to, I'm not inclined to do that.
Neither am I.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not looking to do that at this point.
I just think it's smart to stay current, but I'll go with what the board decides. It doesn't matter to me.
Thank you. Done, fine. Okay, and if we do intend on doing that, we just need to?
Tell us to draft it.
Tell the, tell the solicitor to draft it. Okay, so.
Is there any reason why you're against it, Jen, just out of curiosity?
I just don't think we need to do that at this point. I think we can, we can address it later when we are closer to being able to pass an ordinance. The ordinance isn't urgent. And it also is not free for our solicitor to draft ordinances. There is cost incurred to drafting them. So, for me, for me, that, I don't mind taking a beat on it until we are sure that this is what we're looking for.
When was the amendment, I just, I just want to go back. When was the amendment, Mr. Clark? When was this amendment, you forwarded this to us?
January 30th is the date of our memo. The Act 94 of 2024 went into effect on December 1st, 2024.
So, are we being, are, have you seen what other townships have done?
I do not believe that any of our townships, Second Class Townships, have directed us to draft an amendment to the, draft an ordinance amendment yet.
Have they had an opportunity to consider this?
They've all had it. They, the memos went out almost, almost all of them went out on the same day, so most of our clients have had them for 18 days, 19 days.
Okay, so, all right, let's give it a month.
Yep.
Okay, next, Township Engineer.
Nothing to report.
Chief?
Just with the weather that we had recently, the officers were out there working with Pico and PennDOT and our road crew, and if you keep a watch on our Crime Watch page, I believe we went from 10 roads to now down to currently three roads that are still closed. The road, Pebble Hill Road up by Clemmons and where the 202 bypass or parkway goes over top of Pebble Hill Road is still closed. We are having difficulty with Pico getting there and turning the power off so that we can get a contractor there to cut down the tree, but I anticipate that, at least making some headway on that tomorrow. And then, once that's done, our Crime Watch page will be updated to reflect that the road is open. It's very important, too, that if there's barricades out there, we don't need people moving the barricades because they think they can sneak around the tree to get back to where they're going. It causes a safety issue, because there's wires across that tree, and it's causing a safety issue for my officers that have to go out there and make contact with the people and direct them back around the tree that they shouldn't have been, because people are physically moving the barriers to get around the tree. So, if, if everybody can just have some patience and find an alternate route until we get the situation addressed, as soon as the road is open, we will let everybody know. Secondly, last Thursday, we had our Pleak accreditation, reaccred audit, if you will, from the representatives from the state. Out of over 1,000 proofs, we only had four files that needed minor adjustments, which were all corrected within an hour. The officers and our team did very well with that, and the file, we got a verbal indication that we did very well. The formal vote will be April 24th in Harrisburg, where we, they will, the board will then officially give us the reaccreditation after the vote, but we did very well, and from what I'm told, we're probably one of the top 1% in the, in the state. So, yeah.
Congratulations.
That's awesome.
Congratulations.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Director of Operations?
Good evening. My first item, which is under the Community Recreation Center, is Captain Change Order Number 10, site paving. So, as part of the 25 budget capital project that was identified was to pave the Central Park Loop Road and parking lots that were not part of the community center and court improvement project, and that was budgeted at $415,500. So, we had a little, a piece in the front where the trailer is located up here along Wells Road, that's identified in my memo as a trailer lot, that we had asked Captain Construction to include, which really was cohesive to the project site. We also asked them to give us pricing to pave the rest of Central Park when the project was done. That pricing came in at $348,000, 348,269,078 cents. That's well below the 415,500 that we budgeted. We asked them to put together a change order, and we'd like the board's approval to approve Change Order 10 for the central parking lot paving and loop road after the Community Rec Center is done. That way, the whole project is wrapped up and we're all new and paved, and we can move forward.
Dave, just from my recollection, this, that amount of money does not come out of the community center project. That's something we budgeted separate. It's just part of the same bond issue?
It's not part of the, it's not part of the, yes, the building and the improvements, but it is part of the bond, and so it'll be like, we would be, it's just a show in our, our summary, we'll bump up their, their budget by that amount, but it's separate, because it's in the bond issuing, yes. And that's the reason why we're moving forward, asking to move forward with it, and to do it now.
Okay, thank you.
You might, the board may recall that during the budget work sessions, there were a few additional items that we added into the bond that we did in October, and this was one of those items.
I have a question, Stephanie. Is, this isn't the area that we want to try and get federal assistance with?
No, that is not. This is the existing parking lots area and the loop road and everything.
Okay, thanks. And Dave, does this, this cost of $348,269, does that include striping and all those, those fine details that occur after everything's laid down?
It does. It includes milling, paving, and striping, correct.
Thank you. I made the motion that we approve Change Order Number 10 as stated for $348,269.
And 78 cents. I'll second it. 78 cents. I'll second that.
Was there a question?
I was just going to ask, was there any stormwater management that needed to be addressed when they?
Anything that would be stormwater related would be the inlet tops, which will be addressed by Public Works, Road or Parks Department, or the facility, Public Works. Let's just leave it at that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, my second item is, again, for the Community Recreation Center, U.S. Solutions, who's the electrical contractor. It is Change Order Number 2. This is an increase to their contract for improving the court and sight lighting, and what I mean by improvements is, we have been working with U.S. Tennis Association to basically, for lack of a better term, have compliance with their requirements so that the court lighting would be compliant to allow for USTA sanctioned events, whether it be tournaments or USTA groups that could come and play on our courts. One of the requirements was, is that we had to increase the amount of lighting to their requirements. We've worked with the USTA Technical Engineer Group that has reviewed this. We've also worked with the USTA members, part of USTA, to, to make sure that we're compliant for this. So, it's to increase the course, court lighting. We've also had some upgrades across the project. So, it's what, what I say, it's court lighting, court and sight lighting. That is, that is one piece to this. And the second piece is because we've waited so long for approval of this court lighting, pricing for foundations have gone up, and also lead times, so we're paying a little bit of a premium for the foundations, for those court and sight lights, foundations. Also, we've done some upgrades across the front of the building, which make us meet our own lighting requirements, important with our ordinances. And Mr. Salisbury, our Code Enforcement Director, has reviewed those and approved them. So, I'm asking the board to approve Change Order Number 2 for U.S. Solutions totaling $86,733.82 for sight lighting and foundation work.
Can I speak to this a minute? Dave, and Stephanie, Karen Sweeney intends to make application for some grant from the USTA, so, you know, and that, in order to qualify for that grant, this lighting has to be done, correct?
Yes. Karen and Dave have been working together on that, yes.
So, they may be, so we may be able to recapture the cost for this lighting. I mean, it's not, it's not guaranteed, but we have a good opportunity to recapture that, plus, plus, get additional grant return for just, just with this improvement, making it qualify for the tournaments and so on.
Correct.
I think it's, I think it's a, it's a great idea, and I thank everybody who figured that out.
We met with USTA. They've, they've gone, we've gone through the technical review. They said we qualified to apply. We have received the grant application, and right now, as of 2025, we are eligible for up to $200,000 grant for, for this work, and that's what we would be asking for that. So, yes, there will be money that we could receive to offset the cost, but at the same time, irregardless of the grant, the improvements allow us to do USTA sanctioned events and programming. So, but that is a bonus as well, yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve U.S. Securities Incorporated Change Order 02 for revisions to the Community Recreation Center project lighting totaling $61,733.82.
Oh, that's a, that's a change.
Change, oh, okay, it's a new one, isn't it? And that new amount is?
Did you see, the new amount is?
Yes, I'm sorry.
$733.82.
I'm sorry. One more time. Okay, so totaling $86,733.82.
Okay, Judith, your correction is it's U.S. Solutions.
It's U.S. Solutions, yes.
Correct, that's all.
Okay.
Not as quick as you barb on these, while making these motions.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our third item for the Community Recreation Center is Applied Video Technologies, Change Order Number 2. So, we took a look at the multipurpose room equipment and what was proposed, and it was really Rick Shea's review, and working with the park and rec staff, and then ultimately with Karen, determined that, kind of what we were proposing, we felt needed to be really user-friendly, because while we have this room and we're here, and somebody rents this room, they can use this technology, and it's in here, and we're available, that needs to be standalone. So, we really went with, as I outlined in my memo, kind of more Bluetooth technology, and so we reduced the scope. We removed the screens and the projectors, went with big screen, flat screen, smart TVs, and Bluetooth technology, and that yielded a deduct in AVT's Applied Video Technologies' scope of work totaling $41,095.70. So, they're reducing their scope of work by that amount, so we're saving that extra amount. So, I'm asking the board to approve their, change order to reduce their scope for the $41,095.70.
Would like to make a motion on saving us money.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you for that.
Aye. Good going, guys.
All right, the next one is Community Recreation Center Furniture. We basically looked at a couple companies that were all on Co-Stars, one local here, and the one that we are actually proposing to approve, their proposal, was formerly known as Tanner Furniture, and you see that on your agenda. What we learned is they were sold and bought by STS Innovative Interiors. So, still the same company. They're located in Lancaster, they're on Co-Stars. Rick Shea has worked with Karen and to come up with the needs for furniture in the multipurpose room. This also includes furniture in the lobby. The total proposal amount for the furniture, which is under budget, is $41,145.91, and I'm asking for the board's approval for that. Again, STS Interior Solutions.
Do you, Dave, I think I sent a late message. Do you, can you send the board what that exactly is that we're approving, so we can see it?
It's in my memo. The scope of work is in the memo.
No, I meant the picture. Was the picture in there?
There's some pictures, yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
And what's interesting, too, is we did the tour earlier, and a lot of the equipment is on wheels. Is that correct?
Nope.
For, for the, the equipment that would be purchased, some of the counters and the?
Kitchen.
And the kitchen?
Not the kitchen.
Not the kitchen?
This is furniture for the multipurpose room.
For the multipurpose room, so, yes.
This is round tables.
Right.
Holding chairs, table, table racks, and basically high-top rounds, things like that for, for Karen's use for programming or for events, and then lobby furniture.
So, we did not get pictures of those, did we?
No.
Okay.
Okay, that's, yeah, and I'm just asking, but I'm sure you've taken care, all the ADA furniture, all that stuff was considered in the order?
I would assume so, but I can't guarantee that. So, I mean, you know, anybody, I, we'd have to look at that, but I'm assuming we, we could accommodate ADA.
Yeah, I'm looking at Karen. She's nodding. Okay, thank you. I assumed, because it's Karen, but I just want to be sure. I assumed because it's Karen, but I just want to be sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I made the motion that we approve the purchase through the successor Tanner Furniture in the amount of $41,145.91.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next one is, is the Community Rec Center Kitchen Equipment, Rice Food Equipment and Consulting Quotation. This is for all the items that are not being, that's not being supplied, that's being donated by Gerhard's Appliances. Okay, so this is now all the warming racks, additional fridge and freezer, workstations with storage underneath tables, that kind of thing, and that is in the proposal. So Rice's proposal totals $23,260.23, and that again is below the budget we had for $34,400. So I'm asking for the board's approval of the Rice Food Equipment and Consulting Quotation for the kitchen, please.
I move that we approve Rice's food equipment quote at $23,260.23.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The item number six under this is the window blinds. I did not receive the proposal in time, so I'm asking that that item for Dubco would be tabled. Only thing I would add is that we're working with them for blinds for the windows. They are the same company that provided all the blinds and work for this building. So we're working on a quotation from those. I'm asking that to be tabled at this point in time. Okay?
Are there motions to table?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Central Park Bathrooms. So as part of the overall project, we've got the, the building, the courts and now the bathrooms, which also is not part of the project, it was not part of the bid, not part of the plan set, but it's part of the borrowing. Okay, so it is part of the bond revenue. So we've presented to you previously a pre-cast concrete version of the bathrooms as well as the stick build version. The board gave us direction that we wanted to go with the stick build version. We, and basically this is all outlined in my memo that I, that I provided in the packet dated February 14th, provides a timeline of all the pieces that we worked on going forward here since we started this and then ultimately when we authorized Pickering Courts in Somerson back in January of '24 to prepare the site plans. We looked at site civil and permitting. We then evaluated the options of having the pre-cast bathrooms versus a stick built. We presented that to you as well and obviously got direction. And then back in October 1st of '24, we proposed, and you approved Panoni's proposal to design the bathrooms. And we've been working through that design process as of this date. So that's where we're at right now. Obviously, we understand that we want to stay on schedule with the project itself, the Community Rec Center, the courts and the bathrooms. So we've, we're anticipating that we would have the plans done by end of February, early March to do that. What we did is we talked to Skeptin Construction about schedule, and they are confident that they can meet a June 1st opening with the schedule with the caveat that they would like to start doing site work. Okay, so this memo outlines the timeline, okay? We're still doing design development, but we do have site plans, okay? So what I'm proposing here is we, I'm asking the board's acknowledgement to allow Skeptin to start to mobilize, to do this work, okay, and put things together. My intent is that we would come back to you in next month with all the cost proposals to build the bathrooms from, and they'll be from all the three primes, and we'd be asking them to be approved as change orders. So Skeptin Construction will do the general, we'll have U.S. Solutions doing the electric and Hershberg Mechanical will be doing the plumbing, okay? So we would put that package together. With that, we'll have some options on facade. I know that was a big concern. We did talk to Skeptin about putting a price and also Panoni having alternates of doing just all basically a veneer stone to match what's this building and the Community Rec Center and also some combination of stone and siding, so we have it cohesive through the park. So we're working through those pieces, but Skeptin would just like to start to move and mobilize if it's the board's agreement that we do that. Also, we'll be working with Public Works to start to clear the site, remove equipment that's out there, remove the kiosk and start to really work in that area and fence that off, and we'll start to move forward. So that's what our memo outlines, and I'm asking for the board's kind of acknowledgement of that piece as we, so we can start to move forward with the understanding we're going to have proposals next month.
Yeah, but I, what I understand though is that you need the board to, you know, kind of tell Skeptin it's okay to get going on this Comfort Cottage project?
Correct.
All right, so I'll, I'll make that motion.
Can I, can I just ask, do we have a sense of how much the site work's going to be?
We have a rough draft of the, of the, of the costs from Skeptin only, and right now they made a lot of assumptions because we, they worked off a draft plan and then are finalized. And right now they're in the range of about $530 to $550. That's, but that's not just the site work. That's the building and, and some, you know, their profit, their insurance, their mobilization, building, you know, plumbing and electrical that they put together. They did a courtesy proposal for us. I didn't want to publish that because it's not technically, you know, 100%.
What do we budget for it?
$600.
$600?
I recall, I recall a number, $600,000 somewhere.
I know there was a, our, originally we looked at the bathrooms, building itself, which was the cost for the pre-cast bathroom piece, because way back when we did capital planning in 20, for '24, I think the, just the building itself was about $434,000. That was just the building itself, not the site work.
Right, all the other stuff.
Yes. I remember when we presented the Community Rec Center budget, we had an all-in number of like $800,000, which included the bathrooms and included the additional electric that ran down to Kids Castle. It also fed and ran over to the amphitheater.
Right.
And tied in also some storm, a drain over there and things like that. So that was $800,000. So that's kind of where we're at. I still think that we can get that number down to a point where I think with finalized plans plus, you know, working with them, I think we can get there.
Okay. I appreciate, just for transparency.
Sure, understood.
Thank you.
And do we need a motion or just acknowledgement?
I defer to Mr. Clark on that, but I just want, you know?
Maybe limited, you, what was the word you used the other day, like limited?
A limited notice to proceed.
Limited notice. Limited notice to Skeptin.
Yeah.
Starkens.
That's, that's really my memo. I think I indicate this, you know, authorization of limited notice proceed to start the construction of the Comfort Cottage.
Yeah, I think we're going to need something significantly more formal in March for approval, and I, I'm assuming we'll have that in March.
Correct. My intent in March is to have change orders for each prime, each three primes, that will actually lay out the cost of constructing the bathrooms and doing the site work and utilities, correct.
And I'm assuming that the acknowledgement that you're seeking from the board this evening, that between now and March, there will not be, there'll only be a very small portion of this project that will be completed.
They've indicated that today would like to start to do earthwork and basically start to excavate and foundation work. That's there.
Okay.
And ultimately, I think they're willing to take that risk on as well, you know? They're not asking us for, you know, expend, you know, budget and saying, we're going to bill you for this. They're, they're kind of taking on the risk, but they're, they're working with us and trying to maintain a schedule as well. And they understand that, that this is a, a project that we're, you know, is, is high visibility as well.
And, and, and that's a key word here. They understand the risk that if, for whatever reason, we come back in March and the board doesn't approve this change order, that this is, what they've done to date will be on them?
Well, I think we need to clarify that a little bit, but that's what they've messaged me, yes.
Okay, okay. And again, you're saying the, the dollar amount, I, I just want to get an order of magnitude here. We're not, we're not talking about like $300,000 worth of work is going on in the next month. We're talking about site work and?
Correct. I mean, if they were allowed, again, that they're, you know, if we wait till, you know, you look at a timeline of, if you wait next, our next meeting is March 18th, and March 19th, we give them, you know, we sign the documents as you're approved, they may not be mobilizing for 30 days, which means they're not going to be able to line up a contract for fencing, for material and things like that and start to get things in line, get insurances, get additional bonding. So I think that's also part of that, that allows them to do all those pieces now and moving forward. Again, they didn't come back and say, we need X amount of dollars to start this work. They didn't ask for money, they just said, we have authorization to start.
And I, I think Supervisor Lyons made a motion, and I think it would be appropriate to do this by motion, so if we have a second.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And tell them we really appreciate them doing that. It's on good faith.
Right, great.
I think that's really good work.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, my final item here, and I'll be brief, is our Swamp Road Green Light Go Project has a change order. Panoni prepared the change order and was signed off by Armor and Sons Electric. The additional work is for some work requested by Doylestown Borough up on Swamp Road, North Road and, North Road and, or North Street and Cold Spring Creamery Road. That amount is $8,568. I'm asking for the board's approval for change order number one for the Swamp Road Green Light Go Project, please.
I have a stupid question, but why are we paying that when it's like?
So we're, we're the project sponsor for this project. The, it's an 80/20 match, and of the 20% match, it's being divided amongst the three other municipalities, and they asked for the change, and so technically we have to prove it because we have the contract with Armor, but they asked for the change. And we did it through the project, okay?
Thank you, that makes sense.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dave, do you have a sense of where we are in the contingency with the Community Rec Center and then also overall with the courts and the bathroom?
We're, we're actually under budget by about $54,000 on the owner supplied contingency items. What I'll do is after we're done here, this week, tomorrow, or by the end of the week, I'll publish what that is. I don't know exactly where we are on the?
I know you have a lot of moving parts, but I'm not asking like immediately, I was just?
Yeah, I'll have that, but just to know, on the owner, on the owner supplied contingency items that were also part of the budget, we're $50,000 under budget.
Thank you for that, thank you.
Okay, and on the other piece, on the change orders, I'll have that. I can publish that after we get done here and have these all wrapped up.
Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Great news. Assistant Township Manager.
Yes, thank you. Republic Services did not submit their requested 2025 trash hauler information on time. However, we now have the necessary documents, so I'm looking for a motion to acknowledge Republic Services as a 2025 trash hauler.
I'll make that motion.
I move we add Republic Service as a permitted, Dawson Township permitted trash hauler.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Township Manager.
Yes. We'd just like to share that, and I did share with the board when we received it, but we received the email from DCD indicating that we did receive $105,594 in a grant, and that is the baseline water quality data program that the board had included in the grant application. We were awarded not the full amount, but we will work with what we received. There is a match of about $15,000, say $20,000 that we have to match on that, and we do have that allocated through budget. At this time, we need authorization to accept it and also authorize Jen and myself to do the online signature of the grant.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Supervisor comments, thank you. Let's start with our online supervisor, Varva.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello, everybody. Dorian, if you're still there, hi, I loved your inter, and your remarks, thank you. March 1st is the last day to make the donor wall, and if you, I think the donation is $500, and if you have been a donor and you want to increase your donation to make the donor wall, March 1st is your deadline. And I also want to reiterate the, the Park Board and Park Department's event on March 2nd inside open. I think it's, it's a great addition to already wonderful activities and programs that Park Board has undertaken. Thank you, that's all I got.
Thank you. Nancy?
Sure. Short and sweet, just go Eagles, great, a lot of joy and a lot of happiness, was really nice to see if you had an opportunity to go to the parade. And Chief, thank you for all you're doing. I know the storms have been quite challenging.
Judy?
Good evening. So I'll go, start with my committee reports. It is a little shorter this time because the public water and sewer, we have not met since our last board of supervisors meeting. Also, EAC, that committee meeting was postponed due to the weather, but we did have the hike and bike meeting this morning, and of course, there's always wonderful things going on there. We did have a discussion on grant funding for our hike and bike trails, and because of funding cuts that have been going through, it was nice to hear that we are not hearing of any funding cuts that would apply to either past or upcoming projects. So we appear to be okay to continue the work on our hike bike trails, which is good news. Another interesting thing that's being worked on with hike bike is kids safe to school. They're discussing TAB or would create a video that could be a training program for children, youth to, on bike safety, bike helmets, bike signals, you know, everything about bikes. So it's, it's a nice effort and it could potentially go to schools and teachers that they could show the video. And lastly, I know our vice chair of the Hike and Bike Committee, Tom Kelso, had met with the chief, talked a little bit about e-bikes and bikes on the bike and hike trails, and I know that's an ongoing discussion that's going on. So that's it for hike and bike, but I'd also like to mention a thank you to the police as well. I don't think people realize how safe we have our roads when we go and get in our cars and we go places, that we just take it for granted, that the roads are okay and that we can get through. And there's just so much that goes behind, behind the scenes that the township does provide, that the police does provide in order to make the roads safe for everyone so they can get to wherever they need to go. So, thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Dan?
All right. I'll start with following up on, excuse me, thanking our police and roads and crew, road crews for keeping the roads clear in addition to keeping our bike trails clear. They were clear the last snowstorm, which I had, personally being a little limited on a vehicle, I've been taking my bike more often, and thankfully, it was completely clear all the way into the borough, so I very much appreciate that. From the, we did have a specific meeting for the Traffic Advisory Committee, but an update on the Turk Road situation, that we installed the signs about the truck restrictions, so they're up on that road and moving along with that. And this is a little more on a personal level, but earlier this month, a close friend of mine and fellow supervisor in Middletown Township, Anna Payne, passed away, so I just want to take a moment to acknowledge her service to her community as a sitting supervisor and, you know, just express that she was a, an example to look towards for her to be a supervisor.
Absolutely, thank you, Dan. From, first of all, I want to also express my deep sorrow in losing supervisor Anna Payne, our, from Middletown. She was a really remarkable person, so for anybody who knew her, I send my condolences. For my committee, we met with the Pension Committee this, this past month. We met with Gerard, and we went over the performance of our, our pension and the standing in our pension, and so far, we look like we're doing pretty good. I have to say, our Pension Committee has done a lot of hard work over the years. We have made sure that we have been responsible in funding our pension, and I know we get almost consistently accolades from anybody outside that looks at how we're handling our pension. We really, we really have done a good job funding it and making sure that we make good choices with, with our pensions for our employees. We also, before this meeting, we had a tour of the new Community Recreation Center. It's obviously still in, being worked on, but it looks phenomenal, and I am just so excited to have people in there to, to enjoy it. So we'll have more information on that in the future.[1790.26] I also wanted to make an announcement that every year, for the past couple of years we've been doing, our Police Department has been doing the National Night Out. This year, it'll be on the 5th of August, between 4:00 and 8:00 PM, there's police demonstrations, fire department demonstrations, music, food, almost always hot dogs. I guess always hot dogs, right? It's a great time, and it's a good time to reach out to your Police Department and get to know what they do here. So I'd like to have everybody save that date, it's on the 5th of August. And I think that's pretty much it for me. So, moving on to our next business, is Trinity Gardens of Furlong, they're looking for the third amended stipulation. Who would like to lead this?
I think Mr. Garten is present this evening to speak on it.
If I may, members of the board and the public, at the last Board of Supervisors meeting, you had a presentation from Trinity with respect to some modifications to a prior stipulation. The modifications don't change the use from adult senior living, they just modified some of the issues about parking, some amenity changes, also about the issue of having the roof line include the HVAC, but not necessarily observable from the roadway or from the neighborhood. Other than that, the fundamentals haven't changed. I prepared a stipulation, including also the commitment that there will not be tax exempt anytime in the future, and also they can assign it to the current person who has entered into an agreement with Salderton. So I think it's ready for board action tonight to approve it. The stipulation's been approved by council for the current applicant.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I should have asked it sooner. Prior, when it was, because it came up, I think, when I first started as supervisor, like, five years ago, was it ownership, because now it's going to be rental? Was it ownership prior?
No, it was always going to be a rental facility.
It's always, okay, thank you for that clarification.
Right.
Okay, do I have a motion on this?
I move, I move that we approve the third amended and restated stipulation agreement between Salderton Associates, Associates LLP and Doylestown Township.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Garten.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Garten. New business, land development. Stephanie?
We have a letter from Fox Rothschild on behalf of Furline, they are looking for an extension on the 90-day clock till April 30th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And next?
Next is 3775 Bristol Road, preliminary land development. Mr. Ferravanti is here, he is the engineer for the project, and the board has received, he'll walk you through the project. Mr. Ferravanti, on the laptop, yes, there you go, you found it.
Good evening, Board members, Vince Ferravanti here with Paul Hudson, Alex Larnow, the Equitable Owners tonight, for 3775 Bristol Road. What we essentially have before you is a three-acre parcel that will be subdivided into three one-acre lots, very simple on the surface. What I'd like to do, we did have it reviewed twice by all the consultants, I think at this point in time, all the issues that remain in the various letters are minor and will comply. We do have a couple of waivers that we'll discuss. Just to briefly go through the project, I'll go through the existing features first, we'll come back to this one. Looking at the property itself, essentially void of any natural resources, it was a tree farm or a landscape yard over the years. You can see the surrounding areas. I think the most unique features of the parcel are not natural, but the fact that it's at the intersection of three different municipalities, Doylestown, New Britain, and Warrington below. So when you look at the utilities, they become a little bit complicated as you have two different water systems, the Doylestown Water System and the NWWA, wastewater goes through three townships before it goes to the treatment plant. We do have capacity that's approved, capacity letters from Water Conveyance and Treatment and from the water supply, but essentially, the features on the property, in terms of natural features, there's really not that much to discuss. If I come back to the proposed site plan, let's see, I'm going in the wrong direction. Okay, again, the very simple three houses, they're large dwellings, they're shown there at 3,500 square feet in footprint, one-acre lots, rectangular, so very regular, we have the landscaping proposed. One of the waivers that we were seeking was for street trees on Upper State Road, let's see if I can zoom in here, let's see, if I can. On Upper State Road on the left, you can see that there's the interconnection water meter vault between the NWWA and Doylestown Municipal Authority System on the left, I don't know if this pointer will allow me to point here, it's difficult to see, but it's right here, you'll notice, interconnection between two water systems that allows the transfer of water if and as needed. So one of the waivers was for street trees because along Upper State Road, there's not that much room for street trees, we do have one proposed in the corner. We have 43 trees proposed for landscaping and another 13 or so along the lower road, so we're planting over 53 trees. So we are planting a lot of trees, and the other waiver was with respect to the replacement of trees on a per caliper inch basis. There's an ordinance requirement that says tree species of a certain diameter should be preserved at 60, 70%. All the trees that meet that criteria are located in an area, if I point with the pointer, they're kind of right in front of this house on the third lot, so they're in an area where they would have to come down, and they're rather unsightly to begin with, and I have an exhibit that shows those. I think the Planning Commission was in favor of that waiver as well. They're the trees that we're talking about, the only natural trees that exist on the property, they'd be right where the new house would be, and essentially, they're kind of unsightly, so we requested a waiver for those, as you can see. Back to the issue, I think that was of most importance when we were at the Planning Commission, is hiding this feature. Again, you can see in the back, you know, the vents and the water meter vault back here, you can see the paving and the easement that provides access from NWWA to the interconnected water meter vault. There's not that much room in terms of landscaping, this is about 22 to 23 feet wide, and the Doylestown sign is in this location. So I do agree, and it was a good point made at the Planning Commission, that when you're coming into the township, this is essentially the first thing you see. So the Plan Commission recommended granting of the waivers for landscaping with the condition that we clean up this intersection and provide some landscaping, and also extend the bike trail to the perimeter of the property at both extremes. So we did some work on that, we came up with what we feel is a good design for the corner. Again, there's not that much room to work with, it also involves some reconfiguration of the paving, so we're going to have to go to the water company to get their approval of this, and we came up with a solution that we feel works pretty well. We had to save some room, we had to reduce the paving in width to 12 feet from almost double that, like 22 feet to 12. We reconfigured the paving to provide off-street parking for two vehicles, we left the driveway exactly where it is, and then we came down in the meter vault, of course, we can't touch that, but we're still providing vehicular access within the easement, we're providing storage for their vehicles, but we're just trimming the paving back to allow us to have the bike path at 10 feet, as well as green space on both sides, and landscape beds all the way around. If you look down at the bottom, we've extended the bike path, not only to the existing handicap ramp here for the crossings, but also then all the way up to the perimeter of the site on Upper State Road, and we provided landscape buffers all along with mulch, shrubbery, and flowering landscaping shrubs, so that when you do arrive at the corner, we can hide the vault and the paving and make something that we feel would be a nice entrance to the township. We also suggested that Welcome to Doylestown Township sign could be relocated, and again, that's subject to everyone's review and approval. You can see, we have a sign location right here, that we could have a, you know, Welcome to the Township sign here, as opposed to its current location, which is up in here, it's hard to point with the pointer, but it's right in this location right now. So we could put a new sign down here, landscape, mulch beds. In terms of maintenance, when you have a situation like this, the landscape beds always look great, but they need to be maintained, so I would suggest an association of the three lots that would be taxed with, you know, maintaining this area, so that it always looks nice. Whenever you go by the entrance to a private development, if there's not an association involved for the maintenance of the shrubbery, after a while, it looks like Jumanji, you know? So I think we do want to keep it looking nice, we could have one of the tasks that the association takes care of, and I think it'd be a big improvement, and it was a great suggestion by the Planning Commission. And we also got the bike path through there, and have the grading and everything, it works out nice, and I think it'll be a nice addition to this corner. So with that, we look for any questions that you may have. Again, I think this will work out pretty nicely here.
I have a picky in question, and that is about the sign and an association taking care of the area where that sign would be, is there, I don't know, is there like an easement for that, or what do we have to do to make sure that they do take care of that and where the sign is, or can we get some blowback in the future?
Well, that's open for discussion, I mean, we will have an association, and it will be like any other association, any other sign for any development, but it's very important, it's very visible, and, you know, we could have a blanket easement with the association so that township is free to enter upon if anything were to happen, or if the township ever had to make a repair or do some maintenance, that they could come to the association for reimbursement. But typically, anytime an association maintains something like open space, or culverts, or stormwater basins, the township would always have, you know, a blanket easement to inspect and make sure it was being maintained, and this is so visible that we'll see, and the people who live in these houses are going to want it to look nice, I mean, it's their corner also.
Yeah, Mr. Ferravanti, I was more going from the other direction, why would the homeowners want to take care of our sign, or the area where the sign is? That's all, that was picky in.
Yeah, yeah, no, they're, well, that's their lot, actually, so it's just their corner lot, and the sign would belong to the township, of course, but that area is the property of that lot owner.
But then, we're responsible for the bike trail to clear it, is there a trail that meets it on each end?
Yes.
There is, and my other, my only other question?
Well, the one is across the street, but there is a trail, there is a trail at the, the other development, used to be WB Homes, heading, tying in.
See it on the aerial as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, leave it a sec, so the trail?
The trail's over.
Is it?
It's here.
On Elizabeth, on Elizabeth Lane on the Burke Track.
Right, I see that, but then going down, going down, it's a really busy intersection, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
So if you go down that next layer of homes, there's no, is that a trail?
There's a trail across the street, yeah, there's sidewalk that brings you up and takes you all the way to the Tunisshamany Greenways trails, both in New Britain Township that was just dedicated and to ours, on, by the Shell Brett plant.
Oh, I'm thinking about the, right, is this the take you to, is, does it ever say take you to like the soccer field?
Yes.
I'm just thinking.
And we have trail there.
Get to the soccer field safely, I guess.
Yep, mm-hmm, it'll get you to the soccer field safely.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And my only other question, then, would be the trees, after talking to the Chief, talking about trees being down, and they're all close to that intersection, is there any safety and visibility issues having the trees where they are? I know where I am, the tree branches are starting to like go into the, so I don't know if the location or the size or the type of tree makes sense. I understand there's regulations about creating them, but that would be my only question or concern, because that is a really busy intersection, and if we're encouraging people to be riding their bikes there, I just want to make sure there's that safety part is addressed, so leave that to the experts, that's just my only concern.
Okay, any other questions?
Who would address that?
Well, the street trees, as you see, near the intersection, we have the one tree here, but it's not exactly that close to the intersection, the street trees essentially are where the ordinance requires them to be replaced.
I know, that's why I'm asking, I know it's required, but is it, from a public safety perspective, practical? That's...
We can have, from preliminary to final, we can certainly have the landscape architect, the Judy Stern-Goldstein, take a look at it in her office.
One other thing, we could move them to the other side of the trail.
Yep.
Then it would be further away from the street, and it would still look nice, I think that might be something we could look at.
That'd be great, thanks.
I move for the approval of the preliminary and conditional land development for 3775 Bristol Road.
I'll second.
If I could ask Mr. Ferravanti one question, I think you addressed two of the three waivers that you were originally requesting, the one on, from sections 153, 24, and 25 regarding the sidewalk, I'm not sure if you addressed that with the board, can you explain where you currently are with that waiver request?
Yes, that waiver request was denied, recommended to be denied, but in lieu of the sidewalk, it was requested that we extend the trail.
Okay, so, so in the preliminary motion that you have, or the motion you have in front of you for the preliminary land development approval, it indicates that that waiver will be denied?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. We also have their planning module.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next, we have the vehicle lease options.
Yes, we had discussed this during the budget process, and whether or not we might consider leasing the vehicles that we're going to purchase this year, and the Finance Department, and Anne Marie is here, discussed it and has a proposal for TD Bank for a three-year lease with a payment of $76,903. We also have a resolution from the Solicitor's Office, and we've done these in the past when we've leased vehicles previously, that would allow us to move forward and enter into a lease with TD Bank. Anne Marie, do you have anything else to add?
Okay.
No.
All right, do I have a motion?
Wait, this is, I'm sorry, let me just be clear, we're leasing one vehicle, correct? One EV?
No, we are leasing three, four, four vehicles.
Four, okay, sorry, I didn't, sorry, I thought you said that, okay, sorry, okay.
Yeah, there are four vehicles, two police, one parks maintenance, and then one admin.
And they are all electric, or, no, no?
No, they're, two of them are hybrid, one is a fuel vehicle, and one is electric.
And what were the prices of the vehicles?
Ew. Thank you, Anne Marie. Now we need Anne Marie. Sorry. We had gone over those during budget, so.
Yeah, I don't have the exact numbers, you can, they're in the budget book, I believe the parks pickup truck was about 62, the electric was 45, the police hybrid, the detective car, I think, was 35, 34, 35, and then the explorer, that one's going. Police came out to 110 for the year, so, because it has the upfitting in that.
Right, and that's safety and that's, but they're both hybrid.
So I think both police vehicles came out to 104 or 110, I think it was 110 now this year, so those are the four vehicles.
Yeah.
Comes tied out to like 217, so we rounded up to 220 to borrow.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have the treasurer's report. Do you have a motion?
I move for the approval of the February 18, 2025 treasurer's report.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the bills list?
I move for the approval of the February 18, 2025 bills list.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any public comment? All right, seeing none. Oh, yes, come, please come to the, thank you. I just need your name and your address.
Ed Shepherd, 55 Constitution Avenue.
I don't believe you're supposed to give your address closer. I think just that you-
Usually asks what street they're on.
No, it's, it's whether resident or non-resident.
Yeah, it's resident or non-resident, just for future reference. I'm meaning to mention that, yeah.
But I'm here tonight to talk about transparency in government. In December, there was a vote by the supervisors to raise property taxes by 20%. Agree or disagree with how the vote came out, it was a transparent vote. Everyone was on the record, proper notice was given. We now know what the new policy is regarding taxes. What didn't happen was that someone didn't just shoot an email to the tax collector saying, "Oh, we got a budget shortfall. Would you mind increasing everybody's property tax bill by 20%?" And then shoot, shoot a letter to the supervisors telling you, telling us that you're going to change the tax rate on your own to do this. That'd be very wrong, very wrong. I bring this up because I was deserved to find out that we had, so very, something similar appears to have happened in terms of our policy regarding cooperation with ICE. I know it's a very contentious issue that nationwide is being debated by states, by, by counties, by municipalities. We as citizens have a right to take, to partake in that debate. We just saw, shockingly, that the DOJ is suing New York State over their policies. Any policy change in this matter could result in, for taxpayers being on, have a very big legal bill. I don't think it is right that we be denied an opportunity to have an open, transparent debate on these laws. It's, it's not appropriate for someone to tell someone, "Hey, create a new policy, send an email to us," and just tell us what that policy is, when it should be a vote. Allentown just had the same debate, but it was public. I believe they voted to have their police department not cooperate with ICE. Agree or disagree with that, but they at least were open about it. There was a vote. I filed a right-to-know request for this letter and all the communications, telling the author of that letter to create said letter. I received an email this morning saying that they, a request for a 30-day extension was, was, was asked for for these documents. Now, you don't ask for a 30-day extension to produce documents when there's no, when there are no documents to produce. It is my hope that 30 days from now, all those documents will be produced. But I'd also like to point out to all five supervisors who received that letter, throughout this entire meeting, each and every one of you had an opportunity to tell us, the public, about our new policy and what our new policy is. Each one of you gave a report tonight. Not one of you mentioned our new policy. The, you had the opportunity to put on the agenda. You did not. We have an agenda item, new business, which you could have been brought up in. You did not. I would like to, like to ask any of you, all of you, perhaps none of you, to take this opportunity to be transparent with the public, tell us what our new policy is and how it was implemented. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I would like to very openly and clearly state that there has been no new policy in that. And if our solicitor would like to add to that?
No, the township and the Board of Supervisors have not debated, or enacted, or implemented any policy regarding the topic that the speaker was just speaking about. In addition, if the right-to-know law requires that we do a thorough review and search for any documents that may be responsive for a request, and then if any of those documents exist, then it has to be reviewed as to whether or not there are any exemptions, or they are public documents, and that's the purpose of the 30-day review.
I would just say, I believe everyone here on the board would follow the rule of law. I have complete faith in our chief in following the rule of law and guiding us in any research or anything that needs to be done. It is a contentious time, but transparency and safety is of the utmost importance. And I think people need to understand there's a difference between police and ICE, and as we did have a conversation between police, ICE, and immigration. So thank you for your concern, Mr. Shepherd.
Any other comments? Chief, do you have anything? All right, if there's no other public comment, I would like to thank everybody for attending, and this meeting is adjourned.